Good evening, we're going to resume tonight's meeting. We previously started the meeting at 6:30 PM in executive session. We're now moving to public session. And I want to take the opportunity to thank Mr. Colleen and the Bachelor community for having us here tonight and hosting this meeting. First, on the agenda as always is public input. Does anybody in the audience that would like to be heard make any kind of a comment to the school committee? Raise your hand, you'll be recognized. Ask them the standard state of their name.
Sure. Hi, McCray. How are you?
My name, hi, nice to see you. My name is Alan McCray. I live up on King's Row. And I'm a retired teacher from Burlington. And it somehow caught my attention over the last few months that the substitute pay in North Reading was $60 a day for the subs independent of their degrees or anything else. And just, you know, on the surface of it, it just seemed like so little money for doing anything. So, I decided rather than just give my opinion and feeling bad about it, I called all the surrounding towns today to find out what their sub pay was for the per diem subs. Now, I know there are qualifications if somebody becomes a long-term sub or somebody's a certain number of days. This is just, Mr. Bernard needs somebody, they come in, I'm gonna pay you this amount of money today. So, this is what I found out. The town of Reading for certified teachers pays $95 a day. So, if I were substitute deciding whether I'll come to North Reading or whether I'll go to Reading, you'll never see me here because it's a 50-plus percent raise for me to go work there for the day than this town.
But we create such a welcoming environment here.
Well, it's better than it would, it has to be more, at least 50% more welcoming. So, Andover, I called, they, $75. They don't discriminate between a degree and not a degree. North Andover, it's the same exact thing, $75, they don't discriminate. Middleton is $95 for a certified teacher, $75 if not a certified teacher. Bloxbury's $95, same thing. Topsfield's $95. Linfield is $75 for a certified teacher, 70 if not. Burlington is my old alma mater, as your wife says.
How old are teachers in Burlington?
Great. Well, I've been retired for four years, so they were great when I left. And Burlington's $90, but now we're getting a couple towns over. So, just given that data, I just think it would be really good for you guys to consider for a number of reasons. One is just fairness. Secondly, for competitiveness, as I just said, if you want, I've got a master's degree plus 75 million credits. I really don't plan on subbing, but if I did, I would, you know, it wouldn't make sense for me to sub here.
Alan, thank you, that's good information, it's not something we've thought about. Mel, can I ask you, business manager, a question? Michael, do we, so we have a $60 collaborate regardless of whether a teacher is certified or not certified, we don't differentiate?
It is a flat rate of $60. However, once teachers have subbed in the district for more than 15 days, their rate really goes to $75 at that.
I think that, I do appreciate the information also, and I think, while not making a commitment, I think it's something that we should look at in the formulation of our budget for the next fiscal year and beyond that. It's good information.
Alan, we appreciate it. What I'm gonna do is ask superintendent and business manager to both take a look at that. We'll probably put it on a future agenda item. And I did want to kind of move along tonight because we have a couple of presentations there.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, thank you.
Thanks for bringing our attention.
Next on the agenda is our student report. We're gonna ask Zach Mullin Bernstein, class of 2015, to give the student report, and then we're gonna jump right into the Bachelor presentation. All right, Zach?
So, there'll be no school next Monday for Martin Luther King Day. The high school will have mid-year exams for the rest of the week. And Wednesday, Thursday, and Friday, we have days due to the exams. The North Reading High School of Masters will be performing Peter Pan on January 30th and 31st, and February 6th and 7th. More information about where and when to buy your tickets will be coming out soon. The girls' basketball team lost to Manchester Essex on Friday. They will face Georgetown on Tuesday, and they have a game on Friday against Essex Tech, and it is teacher appreciation. The boys' basketball team won a close game on Friday against Manchester Essex. They will be, they will host Georgetown on Tuesday and are traveling to Rockport on Friday. Both boys and girls winter track teams beat Amesbury last Wednesday, and they will both face McTuckett this coming Wednesday. They also had Mass State Relays this Saturday, and the girls' team plays third and the boys play second. The swimming team lost to Hamilton Winum last Friday, and they will face Manchester Essex this Friday. The wrestling team defeated Wakefield on Wednesday, and they face Watertown this coming Wednesday. The team also won the Cohasset Tournament this Saturday, facing off against 12 other teams from across the state. From North Reading, Joe Morris and Jaywell Bernstein both came in first place in their respective weight classes. The hockey team lost to Newbury Court on Saturday, and they will match up against Linfield Wednesday night at Linfield. Last Wednesday, the American Red Cross Club also held their second annual blood drive at the high school. We were able to have 28 students, teachers, and members of the community come down to donate blood. The next high school ski trip is scheduled for this Thursday. The annual middle school open house night will be held at the high school on Wednesday at 6:30. And they will, the eighth grade students from the middle school will be brought up to the high school to have speech here with their principal. And the gym afterwards, clubs and sports will tell the students a little bit about what they do at the high school. And finally, law trial, traveling to Lawrence District Court later in January to hold their trial. For my student work, I brought in a lab from my AP Business class. I just got back today. We were dealing with a swing that would spin around 360 degrees. We had to find potential energy, the speed, the force, the tension, how to get it to spin around. And we had to write a paragraph about how scale models aren't always correct in American schools.
Thank you, Zach, excellent presentation. Any questions from the committee? Mel?
I have a question regarding the new schools. So, we've been in there for four months. I'm hoping everybody thinks it's great, but I'm just curious, are there any things that you hear or that any of the kids talk about that, you know, they wish were done differently or they'd like to see change? I'm not saying there's gonna be change, but I'd just be interested in seeing the reaction that the student body overall has had in the school.
I think a lot of it has been positive. I know at the beginning, there was some problem with the Wi-Fi. It was probably, we thought it was gonna be ready by the time we got there, but it took a little bit of that, especially there was some problems, but in general, it's been pretty positive.
Good. Assuming that things like having the gymnasium size that we have now, and the additional gymnasium space, and the distance learning lab, et cetera, which seem to be getting a lot of use with guest speakers coming in, that's all been positive. Plus, bigger classrooms where you're not sitting on top of each other, things like that.
Great. I've checked all of your math and physics problems, it's correct. I checked it. Zach, thank you very much. Next on the agenda, I'm gonna turn this over to Sean Pauline, who's faculty and staff, for the Bachelor presentation. Where's Sean Pauline? Sean's left to build. Oh, there he is.
There he is.
How are you?
Good, Sean.
What did I get for you?
You're up.
Hi, you're up. Thank you. Malcolm, it's funny, one of the biggest things that we look forward to every year when the school committee comes is taping up the skirts on the tables to see if they can make it for one. I think the custodial staff has it well done, I mean, it should be good here.
Retiring profession.
We love to have you. It comes a time where you try to figure out how to showcase the different things you do during a school day. And often, we'll use music or arts. Sometimes we've been successful in using science. We had a couple of cool things that have been going on in the Bachelor School that we wanted to share with you. One happened last Thursday, where we had, the North Reading Public Schools had the opportunity to send just over 30 students and staff to attend Governor Baker's inauguration. Representative Brad Jones worked with the superintendent and coordinated an excellent trip. So, with us this evening, I invited Caitlin Tully, fifth grade classroom teacher, who took a group of fifth grade and a couple of third grade students. And she is going to share some of those highlights along with the students with you for tonight.
Sorry about that, ladies and gentlemen, can I invite you girls to come on up? I was so lucky to get to be chosen for this. Any of my colleagues will tell you history is my thing, my passion, it's what I get excited about. So, when Mr. Colleen approached me about doing this, and then I got to travel with these four beautiful girls to the State House. I couldn't have been more pleased and more proud to be there. I just want to introduce you guys. This is Abby Wall, Ella McTeague, Gianna Spinelli, and Kira Ward. And each one of them was chosen by their homeroom teacher in various different ways to go. And I think we definitely have the right group of girls ahead of, with us. I will point out to you guys that this PowerPoint was designed entirely by the girls, a little bit editing, couple tweaks. But let you guys speak, okay?
Good fun.
So, Alan's gonna tell us a little bit about the gates. You stay here, girl, I'll let you come back here, okay? Go ahead.
The gates open when it is the inauguration. It is a special time because it is the only time that the gates open. And it's special because the governor, they show how like the governor, from the leader governor to the new governor, and he walks through a red carpet. And you get to like watch him walk through the red carpet and like meet him and stuff sometimes.
And Ella, can you remember, what else did they salute him with as he was coming into the State House? That kind of caught us by off-guard for a second. The cannons, right? So, it was very, it was very neat. A little off-putting at first, but very neat to kind of see that. Thank you, Ellen. Abby, do you want to read this to us? Okay, it's okay.
When we look back at this miraculous day, we will realize history is really important. We will always remember from here, Charlie Baker became governor, and Karen Torito became head governor. Learning about the nation should be really important.
Awesome, thank you, Abby. Karen, you wanna read this?
The governor has control over the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. This includes schools, buildings, and homes, and making improvements to try to make us have a healthier, happier life style. In Charlie's word, "Let's be great, Massachusetts."
Do you want to introduce? We were very excited at the State House, and I will tell you, it's my first time ever taking a selfie. We took quite a few selfies with some famous people, so you want to tell us who we took some selfies with? Gianna?
Sure.
Go ahead.
In this picture right here, we got to meet Charlie Baker. We all shook his hand, and it was awesome. In this picture, we took a selfie with Governor Baker, his daughter Caroline Baker. She reminded me a little of Ella.
And made a very big deal out of Ella because they share the same hair color.
In this last picture, we met Karen Torito. It was awesome because we got to meet somebody that is not normally seen around.
Here are some additional selfies the girls thought would be fun to put in there. If you followed us on Twitter, it was kind of neat to see how things were progressing during the day. It was a great way for us to share our day. We also had two third grade boys with us, Evan and Nick. Nick is Brad Jones' son. Thank you very much for your time, girls, you were fantastic, I couldn't be more proud of you.
Do we get to see the shirt again?
Do we get to see this fairing in? Remember? We weren't actually in the House Chamber. We were in an annex. They served us lunch and got to see all the pomp and circumstance, so it was very good.
So, you guys have a hint with Governor Baker?
I think so.
We need some official tab of seven. For schools, if you said you were gonna take care of the school, can we send you guys in?
Oh, yeah, yeah. We'll send Kira. Okay.
What do you think was the most interesting thing or, you know, I think that surprised you the most about the whole ceremony that was going on, seeing that, or anything that stood out to any of you?
I, the thing that really sounded out for me was him to actually shake his hand. I thought that he was just gonna walk and wave. It took me by surprise that he was actually taking selfies and shaking hands and everything.
Andy's a huge guy, right?
He's a big guy.
Yeah.
He's really big, yeah.
What did you think of the sales we're filming over, the hall?
It looked very old, and I was shocked to see some of the things in it. They had really cool pictures of past governors, and I was elated to be there.
That's a great picture.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Unfortunately, the superintendent had us in an administrative council meeting that day, so I was unable to attend the inauguration, but we were able to follow on Twitter. And actually, one of my favorite pictures that Caitlin sent, was it you or Ms. Chief or the one with the former Bulldogs?
I did.
It was two former Bulldogs who I think are in middle school now, probably seventh grade. So, it was a picture of two young girls and Charlie Baker. And the perfect, so you're gonna go follow my Twitter feed and find this, but the perfect little photobomb, like there was a gap in between the bodies, and it was the head of my third grade student, Evan Panzini. And it was perfectly framed. It should be like the tweet of the year as far as I'm concerned. But it did allow me to, I'm not a huge Twitter person, but it did allow me to follow that event, which was pretty exciting. The next emphasis of the evening is gonna be on digital literacy. As part of the large cap for the town, they purchased over, and generous donation from our parents' organization, multiple Chromebook carts for the Bachelor School that we're bringing into classrooms to use. With that, we're trying to figure out how to incorporate our digital literacy and technology integration into classroom instruction more often here at the Bachelor School. Last month, December, we had an opportunity to participate in the Hour of Code, which I brought the fourth grade teacher, Ms. Callan, and a few fourth grade students who were gonna share about their experience. But this was an experience that was shared K to five. All students participate in this program. Oh, you're gonna click?
Yeah. So, it might be a little bit more helpful. We're just gonna watch a quick little tutorial. I showed my students a longer to get them wrapped up about coding, and they didn't know anything about coding until I first got challenged by Mr. Colleen about to try the Hour of Code. And this is just a preview of a long one. It's just sort of a preview, let's kind of get you all over with it.
It's terrible, that nine to the school, don't teach it.
I definitely didn't offer it at my high school.
So, we're trying to make this video to show that anybody can learn. We want to get 10 million students to do the Hour of Code.
Hour of Code.
Hour of Code.
The Hour of Code.
Hour of Code.
Hour of Code.
Hour of Code.
The Hour of Code!
How do you get him to get the sunflower?
He needs to do some actions.
I got it. Yay!
And then we'll run it and see what happens.
Run this.
Ah, that was cool.
I just wrote your first code.
I wrote it?
Yeah.
This is the code that you just wrote.
Very awesome.
I thought like code is like FBI hacker signals and stuff.
A little bit of problem solving, a little bit of logic, it's like construction.
Programming is a lot easier today. Don't just play on your phone program.
Awesome!
How does someone go about getting a job?
Maybe take an online class, try to class at a community college.
You can get one of the best-paying jobs in the world.
I think medicine's moving into the whole computer age. Technology touches every part of our life. If you can create technology, you can change the world.
So, we're excited that you are participating in today's Hour of Code.
We just did two lines of code.
Four lines, seven lines, five lines.
Three, two, three, four, link, eight, two, three.
Nine, two, go fast, code. Nine lines.
Sixty lines of code.
Ninety-nine lines.
Sixty lines. Eighteen lines of code.
Seventy-five lines of code.
Doesn't matter how old you are.
Thousand years. The Hour of Code.
They are programming a code, the Hour of Code.
The Hour of Code!
Whether you're a young man or a young woman, whether you live in a city or a rural area, everybody in this country should learn how to program a computer.
I just completed the Hour of Code.
It's actually really easy to learn.
Girls should learn this too.
Understand that language, that's gonna be the future. Anyone can learn computer science. You can learn too. Jack Dorsey, Mark Zuckerberg, Bill Gates, all of y'all, I'm learning. Give it a shot.
So, that was just a brief little introduction. The one that I showed them was a nine-minute clip to kind of get them wrapped up, and it talked about athletes, people who've created different programs on the computer, things that they're familiar with. Facebook, sorry, Mark Zuckerberg and Bill Gates were the people who founded and put all the money towards developing a free curriculum called code.org. And that's the Hour of Code that we chose to use for our lesson in the classroom. And it really sparked, so, Mr. Colleen, if you want to go on to the next one. So, Mr. Colleen sent out a massive email, you know, to the whole school, asking if, you know, every teacher could be involved in the Hour of Code. And I honestly had no idea what this really came upon me. I kind of thought it as first as another thing I have to do. And, but I actually, I love technology, and I'm really involved with the Stu and creating more of a technology and the area of mathematics curriculum. And so, when I first saw it with my students and I started to look at the introduction YouTube clips, I got really excited. So, then, of course, the enthusiasm kind of trickled through. And so, the week of December 15th was the Hour of Code, and all the classrooms, grades one through 15th participated in this challenge. I'm not sure if kindergarten did, but I didn't put them in there just in case. And so, that was when we start, we got something sparked. I started to do it with my students, sitting in the computer lab just for one hour. And I could hear my students just like in awe, just whispering to themselves, "This is amazing. Oh, my gosh, is this how you create a website? Can I develop games over this?" Like, all of a sudden, things started to connect for them. And we've now been working on about an hour a week. We've been, I've been adding that to our already regular computer times. And I take the computer lab and Chromebooks to implement inside the classroom so they can get about another hour. Because I thought, if they're this invested, I have students who are working on it home independently, and showing, like teaching me, "Oh, this is how we create this, and we need to create this angle." Ms. Callan, I know what you did wrong on this one step, because I got really stuck actually the other day, and I don't know if it was you, Chloe, or Annie who corrected me. But it was, it's great. And so, I have some of the students, the whole class was asked three different questions after coding for a couple hours. A lot of my students are in the hundreds with lines of code that they've been able to do. And so, I have five students here. If you guys want, I'll stand up, I'll introduce you. This is Chrissy Tony, Nick, Waylon, Travis Long, Fair Arden, and Chloe Flores, who have all volunteered to come in here tonight. And one of the questions that we asked was, "Why do you think being introduced to code is early and important?" And so, I just compiled all of the answers from all 20 of my students who participated, and they're gonna be able to share it with you and share some of their coding skills with you again, so. Chrissy, if you'd like to give them some of the answers?
Everything can be made into a code. It will help us get better jobs later. You can practice and make a helpful invention later. The more you practice, the better you become.
You can make something that could change the world. It helps us learn skills that we need. It is good practice for math skills. It helps us understand how things are made digitally.
And the next one? We asked the next question is, "How is code related to other things that we do in school?"
You need to know math, specifically geometry. You need to, you need to be able to read. You have to be able to put things in a specific order. You have to use what you have learned from the level before to do the next level. You start with patterns, developing the longer code patterns. You have to refine your code just like we do in our science labs.
There's a lot of geometry. And then the last question was, "Why is coding interesting?" So, these are all, again, just right from what students wrote down, and they're just sharing the answers, so. Look right there.
There's a lot of geometry, and that is my favorite subject, is a challenge. You have to be able to do many things at once. You get to actually create something on your own, to get to control the computer and tell it what to do.
You get to problem solve, it fosters perseverance. You get to try new things and do new and different things. I like how I feel when I'm at a computer level. It is interesting, it motivates me to keep trying.
So, what coding, coding in class can lead to? So, from a teacher's perspective, so at the end of each unit, so each, you'll see when they demonstrate to you that each level, it starts at the very basic of just saying, "Okay, you're gonna go straight, and your goal is to get to the first level's Angry Birds." So, of course, it motivates them because they're like, "Oh, we're doing Angry Birds, it's all a game." But really, the goal is to move your piece to the Angry Bird and save him. Or, I don't know if it's actually saving him, but it does something. So, it goes from basic, just move forward one, move forward one, you have to count out the spaces, then turn left. How many more spaces do you have to turn? And then the next level, once they get handled with that, they go on to incorporating, how many pixels does it take to get to that line? Or, what is the degree turn? So, it changes from turning left to right turn 90, or right turn 180 degrees, depending on the shape. And it just keeps building off of that. And then, what most of my, what we're all here, what all my students are at the level of, is being able to write code and then refine it, which is part of the engineering process that we really do emphasize in my classes, always that last step, refine. How can you make it better? Make it with less steps. And that's the harder part that really challenges them. And it's nice that the program will say, "You could have made this in six steps, six lines of code." And they'll have to go back and, they find a repeat button. "Okay, I don't need to draw a square, I can move forward, turn right 90, and repeat that four times." And that's how they're, they're learning off of the previous lessons from before. And then, here's some pictures. You'll see this firsthand, but this is the very first level where they have to just, they have the assignment of moving from here to here. And they have to use the key button, and they tell them which ones they have to use. And this is a line of code that one student wrote last Thursday, or last Friday. We're using the Chromebooks, they can work collaboratively independently. And then, this leads to the higher level where they're able to do degrees, changing it in repetition, and having to insert where they might have gone wrong. And it tells you when you're wrong. I think we missed, was there a slide that we missed? Maybe I skipped ahead. But anyway, so, what it really does help though is with, it does focus across the curriculum. It's not just math and science. It has to talk about detail, paying attention, organization, cause and effect, sequencing. And that's across the curriculum that these students need to have, those skills. And this is just one way, one avenue, that was used to kind of enforce those, those skills at a level. So, what I would like to have is, if it's okay, if some of my students bring their Chromebooks over to you guys to kind of show them, to show you guys what they can do for coding. Would you like to, you want to pick some? I got one of those here.
Chloe, come over here, I have your Chromebook here. Chloe, show me what you have.
Yeah, let's go on over here, let's spread it out. There you go.
I just wanted to give two minutes for the students to have an opportunity to interact with the school committee because I don't think on the coding, the presentation should actually see what they're doing and the steps that engage.
Now, how do you know it's 120? Could you slide? Just to review those pixels, but it's very, you had to add four times right into the program. And you did it. Now, how did you like, did you get your first started? Did you log it?
So, the main purpose was to create the triangle.
So, this is what you're doing.
And then, like, this off.
Could you see how much?
Just to do that triangle. So, that's what this is, this is program. So, this is program. So, that's what coding is. It's a kind of program.
So, what happens if you hear it? If you're listening. Especially to see where they started to. So, you can. But I had to try to design it.
Ten to fifteen seconds to get that last one to out.
Well, that's not bad.
No, it's not bad. That's actually not a, that's not a very high value.
So, now you can make four.
Yeah, yeah.
I see.
Yeah.
That's all you really have to do.
So, basically, like, now it's changing.
Can I ask a question?
Really?
All right, let's finish up that. Let's carefully carry our Chromebooks and mouse back to the table, two hands.
That was awesome.
Very good.
Yeah, we can take your, very impressive.
I want to thank both Mrs. Tully and Ms. Callen for bringing up the students tonight to be able to share some of that stuff. In addition to our presentation, we have Helen Kelly, who's our digital learning specialist for the district. She works in all three schools, probably all five schools. And as part of NRPS 2016, this is the position that you're seeing, that we're trying to get more into our district to, to help support our classroom teachers and our students to have more opportunities to integrate technology into the program. She's going to share with you some of the work that she's been doing with some of our, our younger students, I believe. Are you focusing on the K2 research? And since your meetings are a little bit later, I try not to bring them out to too many late meetings.
I want to thank these guys. Thank you very much.
I know one of these. Now, there we go. One of these, yeah. Yeah, absolutely. Thank you. I'll introduce myself again. My name is Helen Kelly, and I have the privilege of being one of the two digital learning specialists in the district. I have the opportunity to go to, really, all the schools. I was focusing on the elementaries, but I will go to the middle school and high school. I call myself by appointment only. And teachers get to make appointments with me, and I'll go, I'll work with teachers, I'll work with students. We'll plan projects together, I'll support them in using technology. Go ahead. So, one of our recent projects has been to work with staff, starting last year, in our professional development. We worked, Joanne and I, with Kim Smith from the high school. We began to work with K through two teachers to implement grade-level research projects that would address the research and production standards. And then that same work is happening this year with three through five teachers. So, the standards that we were working on, I kind of have them a bit in blue. And this is K through two, they're being asked to conduct short, as well as more sustained research projects based on focused questions, demonstrate understanding of the subject area under investigation, and then using technology, including the internet, to produce and publish writing, and to interact and collaborate with others. So, our tools, such as the Chromebooks and the iPads, allow us to bring the technology into the classroom, and lessons can be co-taught right there. So, databases are slightly different than just going on and searching the internet. If we're asking our students to go and search, a lot of times they go to Google, they punch in puppies, and the first site that comes up is the one that they think has all the right information. And so it's really important for us to understand and to teach the kids that when they search, what the results that they're getting is what is put out there for free, and what companies want them to see. So, databases. web, and because it's subscription-based, the information has been chosen carefully and organized for the user. So, this is an example of one of our databases that we use with our K through two students, sometimes our third graders as well. It's called PebbleGo. And you can see that it focuses on, if we look at it, it's animal science, biographies, and social studies. Click on the Google. I'm sorry. It's okay. So, I'm just going to bring you to the site so you can see what that looks like. So, if we were to go over, for example, to biographies, go to athletes. And one of the things that's really great about this is that not only can the students read it to themselves, but it's also read for them.
Sports star Jackie Robinson was born in Georgia in 1919.
So, they have an introduction, they have the early life, life work, later years, contributions, and then related articles. And that's just one example of one of the databases that the kids have been using for research. It covers lots of different topics. So, after using these databases, students are able to use our Chromebooks, they can collaborate together on documents, they can share their information. One of the, some of the powerful features of Google Docs is that they can share and collaborate. They can comment on each other's work, as well as the teacher being able to comment on the work. We have an opportunity for a live document chat while they're working. You can see the revision history, and there's also things like add-ons, so we can start to teach them about making bibliographies and things like that. So, this is, this was done in a second grade classroom, it's a KWL chart. It's what they know, what they want to know, and then later on, after they study the topic, they would fill in what they learned. This was done, whole class, the kids were raising their hand, and the teacher was filling it in. And so, technology changes the interaction that kids can have with this type of document, because now, instead of raising their hand and asking their teacher to write it down, if we give them our Chromebooks, or we give them our iPads, even that shy kid who's in the back of the class who's nervous about raising their hand can participate. And I'm going to give you an opportunity to fill in what you know about a topic that I picked for tonight. Yep, go ahead. That's okay. At least one, at least one sentence. So, one of the things you may notice is, up top, it tells us who's logged into the document. And then as you're typing, we can see who is contributing to the document. So, imagine a group of students working together on a project, they, no longer do you have to have one child wait for the other ones to finish, they can all work at the same time and work together. Can we have it?
That does have it.
Our middle school and high school students love this, because they can work from home with partners and groups, and all be working on the same document.
But should, should everybody be able to input at the same time? Because it kind of causes no good idea.
Well, we tend, we have a big group working on one document at once. So, if you're working with a partner, or you're working with, say, four, you know, it'd be a little bit of a different experience, but I don't think everybody has the opportunity.
Maybe you tell someone, start up in categories, someone start up.
Absolutely. Yep, basically, if you're making slides, you might decide it up and say, "I'll work on the first grade, you work on the next grade."
Yeah. And then you can save it and go back to it anytime.
Anytime, from any place. And you don't need to worry about carrying around a thumb drive, as long as you know how to log into your Google account, you can access this from anywhere. All right, I'm going to stop you there, you have a lot of time. And you can also see, you know, who contributed, who did what, keep some revision history. So, these are some end projects that the students have done. After using our databases, we had first graders do community helpers, and they got to go out into the community, take pictures, bring those pictures back, they were emailed back to us, and then using our iPads, they created some posters. There were research projects that happened in second grade, this is a project that was done on Walt Disney. And here's our kindergartners, learning about hibernation. And yes, they did do use the databases, they did their research there, they learned about hibernating animals. And... But so, even our kindergartners are publishing. Can I answer any questions for you?
You are my genius. Yes, I am, because I watch make me genius dot com. It's time to wake up.
Two fifty?
About two eighty two.
So, they're much cheaper than iPads.
They are, yep.
And they give you pretty much the same, give you more functions than an iPad, right?
Very, very different functions. I wouldn't say the same or better.
Right, you don't have all the apps, you're pulling in all the games and stuff, which, so...
Very, very different functions. These, these were created with Google Apps. They're very good cost, they're good for a lot of environments, and a lot of ways, they can be, in some ways, a laptop replacement. Your iPad's going to be very different. You can do a lot of things with iPad you can't do with Chromebooks, but they are more costly.
And are we storing things in a cloud somewhere? Or are they stored on, is there memory?
There is, and that's one of the greatest features about it, is that no matter where you are, you can access your work. And also, for the kids, it really doesn't matter, you know, which device you hand them, because they're using a login.
Right, it's only they login, they get to where they're at.
That's right.
I'll give you a Chromebook, so we can...
Well, the district, there's a hundred and twenty, at the high school, a hundred and twenty now at the elementary, middle school, I'm sorry, the elementary level, and there are now ninety at the middle school. So, we're building them up, so each serves a different purpose, we're really building them forward. So, this grade's very lightweight, because there's no, there's not a lot of moving parts in there, so they boot up very quickly, there's not a lot of software issues, and teachers and students are finding it very, very useful. And with the Google Apps, which they can use, they can access it from home, from their phones, from their iPads, from their Google device. No matter where you are, you can connect to your work, and that's really been exciting for kids.
Excellent. Any other questions? Okay?
John, what?
I mean, that's, I think, what Jeanie and I have been saying over here, it's just the high level of work and expectation. Yeah, really, it's very, very impressive.
Guys are doing a great job.
Yeah, really, very, very good.
Thank you very much.
Why didn't they have these when I was working?
Because they were working on the wheel and fire.
I have another question. I, I know that, you know, we, most of our schools' curriculum is full, the day is full. I asked this, I think, at our last meeting that we had at the high school, or maybe it was two meetings ago. Is, is the possibility of adding coding as a class, even at the elementary level? If we could fit it in an hour a week, but especially if we get to high school, we have electors, et cetera. To me, it's just something that we really should be doing, and I was psyched to see the Hour of Code here. I don't know, did any other schools do it, Patrick, or just the batch?
Some others did. Our goal is to increase it every year more, and, but yes, the Hour of Code is fantastic, it's a great appetizer, but we, we know we need this in our curriculum. So, Helen's position right now is district-wide, she kind of focuses at the elementary, gets up to middle school and high school a little bit, but our NRPS 2016 vision is to increase the number of digital learning specialists in the district for next year. So, we want to have at least two more, so that this can really become a part of what we do. So, we have coding, we have robotics, we have digital citizenship, we have research projects. You can see our standards have been built right in, that we have technology, so from the research to the production. So, we need more of this. So, that's really why, you know, we're doing the best we can right now with the staff we have, and we want to increase that, so we can have a lot more opportunities for kids in the future. So, that is the plan.
And I'd just like to thank the district for giving Chromebooks for all of the school commissioners. It's really, we really appreciate it. Thank you. Thank you.
Well, back to you, thank you very much.
Yeah, that was excellent. Great job.
Um, to close, yeah, I want to thank Helen Kelly for coming out and, and helping us with the theme that we wanted to bring to your awareness and support of NRPS 2016 and the work that our students are doing. At the same time, I want to acknowledge my school council who's in attendance this evening, my returning veteran, Mrs. Tina Bork, fifth grade classroom teacher. And then I am, I have a lot of new blood in our school council, which is always good. I have Sandy O'Connell, who is an employee and a parent in the district, Mr. Eric Evans, a parent of a first grader, just first grader right now, right? And Miss Harrington, who is a first grade parent as well, coming with kindergarten next year.
Well, Sean, thank you very much. Thanks for the backup. Thanks to the council, especially, you do so much good work for the schools. It's always a pleasure to come to the Bachelor School, and Sean has always a great job in the presentation. But thank, thank you very much.
Thanks, appreciate it.
Okay, Mr. Bernard, now, in number of presentations, is there any particular lot you want to go in? I know, Miss Bailey's here, Wayne's here, I'm not sure.
Assistant principal's here.
Assistant principal's here. If you want to go, just, I'm two, the next one, the, go through the orders, the high school trip proposal. Okay. Next on the agenda is our North Running High School Trip Proposal for London and Dublin, this is April 2016, and I think we have some presentations, yeah?
My name is Eda Dossi, this is Jeff Lucky, we both are running our international trips.
And this year, we're going to Germany, Czech Republic, Austria, and Switzerland. And in effort to get the kids more time to plan and financially in with their time. We would like towards our 2016 trip, which will be to Dublin and London. And Jess will tell you more about that.
So it's similar to the trip that we're going on this year in terms of length. It'll be nine days, again, missing the one Friday right before the break. So we would be leaving probably on the Thursday night, sort of after school Thursday, and then returning the following Saturday. And it would be the same, like, sort of six to one chaperone to student ratio again. And then the cost this time would be $3,045.
And you're only just one day at school, right? Because it's April vacation.
Yep.
How many kids are going this year?
Forty-five.
Forty-five?
And when are you going? When's April vacation?
That's the end?
Yeah. Yeah, what date? I'm just wondering, when does it start? Because I'm gonna, I'm almost on the same exact trip and I'm going April 14th. I'll probably see you guys over there. Whatever country you just mentioned.
I think it's the next year.
I think it's the following year.
I think it is.
Well, maybe I'll write it to you.
Yeah, maybe you will.
Why don't you go as a sponsor?
I think you're leaving on the 17th.
That sounds great. Now, do you guys do any kind of fundraising?
So for the trip this year, we're sort of seeing students are looking into doing that right now. We're looking at, you know, potentially doing some bake sale stuff at school. But I think that our hope for this one is that the cost is less because we're planning it so much further out. It'll be a little bit easier sort of on families. But we're more, we're very much open to fundraising if kids, you know, are looking to do that.
And for chaperones, you have staff and parents?
Staff only.
Just staff only. And is the cost for this year's trip about the same, $3,000?
Um, $3,400.
And you have 45 kids?
I qualify as staff.
Well, you don't qualify as a student.
Right.
Any other question, Mr. Bernard? Do you have a recommendation?
I certainly do recommend the trip, Mr. Bassett. Just as a quick aside, we've had some very good travel experiences come out of the high school the last few years. Costa Rica, Italy, Spain. Jess and Gavin have taken on the trip again for this year and are looking to propose for 2016. I know the feedback from students when they do travel is very, very good. These two folks, along with the other chaperones, do a very nice job. And I wholeheartedly do us the proposal.
Well, thank you for taking the initiative. You certainly aren't coming to us plenty of times in advance. If there's no further questions, I'm gonna ask for a vote to approve the trip to London and Dublin. Week of April 21st, April 29th, 2016. We have a motion from Jeanine.
Second.
A second from Mel. Is there any further discussion?
There is none. Please say aye. I oppose, no.
Motion carries by vote of enough. Thank you very much. Thank you. Good luck.
Sure, I have one question related. It's from Michael. In terms of fundraising for trips, et cetera, in light of our new guidelines that we put in for booster groups and other groups, I'd like to see some sort of accounting when we're having, we're having a trip and they say there's going to be fundraising. How much they were able to raise? Not, not that they have to meet a certain goal, but I'd just like to see what kind of money is coming in in terms of fundraising. Because I think it goes along with the kind of transparency we're trying to establish with the booster groups in terms of how much money is being raised. So I think, I think that's a good idea for us to know that. So I don't know if that has to be part of the...
It's different because you might, these are fundraising activities on behalf of our student activities. Clubs and activities that fall under the school district.
Right.
The guidelines put in place for outside support organizations.
Correct, but I'm just thinking, and I know we haven't addressed this yet, but I know I've had some issues in the past with money that's raised by clubs, et cetera, and the accounting that is or isn't done. So I'd like to, you know, with things like this, or the middle school trip, we have businesses donating money. I'd like, you know, I'd like to just know that we got $30,000 from local businesses for scholarships or things like that.
It's all kept in this account.
Right.
I go out to the schools, I went out to the high school this year and did some cash handling, training. We all get some information. It was all set forms of fundraising that it used by all treasurers.
So that should be easy enough.
That should be easy enough.
Thanks.
Next on the agenda, I'm gonna ask our high school principal, Mr. LaFret, to introduce our new high school assistant principal, Mr. Downs. Mr. LaFret, before us.
Thank you, he's a good answer. Well, first of all, Mr. Leonard, it's a great opportunity.
Do you think I would leave when I knew?
So many, so many more flicks happen here. So, you know, as you may recall, on October 20th, we had some transition at the, at the high school and the district level. And in that period between October 20th and December 1st, we had a collaborative group of teachers and parents and students work to conduct a search, a very thorough search, for the next assistant principal. It was a fabulous process. And I can attest to that because of the quality of candidates that we saw and the quality of finalists they were able to choose from. And having done that, been in that position as the assistant principal of the school for eight years and knowing the number of tasks that, you know, we're looking to have somebody complete and perform. And it's, I think many times somebody might look at it and say, "Well, it's, it's the discipline piece." And it's so much more than that. I know some sports games might, might like the analogy of the glue guy. And that, that's really what we're looking for in this role. And I might say, you know, because of Mr. Downs' background, he's more of the Swiss Army knife than the glue guy. But he really has to do it all, and he hasn't at all since he signed up, what, on December 1st? And I'm so happy he's here. And I want to formally introduce you to Mr. Downs, our new assistant principal of high school.
Hello, everyone. How are you doing this evening? If you have any, Mr. Bernard basically said that you may have some questions for me, so I'll do my best to answer them for you. How's that?
Well, you have a great resume and a lot of experience. And welcome you to Not Running.
Thank you.
Glad to have you. Certainly had a transition over the last six months. Superintendent, assistant superintendent, principal, vice principal. And I don't think we could have done a better job than we've done. I'm really pleased with the administrative team that we've normally put together, but the administrative team in general that we have. So I'll turn it over to the committee. Are there any questions to Mr. Downs?
How have you found your new position, Jeanine?
I love it. You know, so I, you know, I've been, I've been with them for 15 years. So for me, I don't change too much in my professional career. So to go from that to here has been a great transition. The parents are great, the students are great, the teachers are great. I have AJ right there with me and of course, you know, Mr. Bernard. So for me, it's been, it's been an easy transition and a great transition. Love it, absolutely.
So you've been here six weeks. What, any surprises?
Any surprises?
Yeah, anything or anything other than, other than the things you're talking about, AJ? No, any, anything, you know, with the new school, anything that, you know?
The good and the bad.
Yeah, you know, just actually how great it really is. You know, when you, they say, you know, the grass isn't greener on the other side. Well, for me, it really has been greener on the other side. So for me, it's just been so positive. I can't say enough. And it's even better than I thought it was gonna be, honestly. The transition has been great. Like I said, the students have been great, the parents have been great, you know, everything about it's been great.
Just to follow up on that, do you have any heat in your office at all?
Well, I'm gonna give credit where credit's due. I do want to give credit where credit's due. Wayne did give me heat. He came to my office and he found out how cold it was and he said, "I'll get you some heat."
Yeah, for the public, AJ, I think both your offices are kind of...
Especially the vice principal's offices, right up against the middle school wall.
The exterior wall.
So that's still unheated because they're doing construction over there. And so the cold air is kind of...
I will say, within the last three weeks, Wayne, Wayne has really done a tremendous job and it's very comfortable.
It is.
Very comfortable. Thank you, Wayne.
And it actually endured worse. So to me, it's all relevant. So, you know, but it's great. I mean, everything, Wayne came right in and fixed it, so I can't complain, so.
Well, I think you made a great choice. Strong military background, strong sports background.
Yes, yes.
You know, so it's, it's a good choice.
Are you a job, you were an associate principal at the Thune High School. I think there were two or three associate principals.
Yep.
So are your job responsibilities pretty much the same or are you doing a few different things here?
Yeah, well, actually, so I was, I was lucky because when I was up there, I actually ran my own little school. So I was able to experience like kind of doing everything on your own. So I had to do all the evaluations, you know, so this role is similar. You know, now I just have to learn the systems. And the new, the Redeker system that we have is way different than what I'm used to. But the jobs are very similar. What I like here is that I get to focus more on teaching and learning, as I say. Like today, I get to meet with teachers about the evaluation process. And I enjoy things like that, you know, we're still, still a teacher at heart. You know, it's what I chose to do when I was in eighth grade. I knew then, so I've been pretty fortunate in my life.
Good. Well, it was great meeting you. And I'm glad to be seeing and hearing a lot of you, so good luck.
All right, thank you very kindly. Appreciate it.
Thank you. I'm gonna skip over Wayne in just one second because I think my session's not gonna be very long, right?
No, I won't, but I can wait.
You sure?
Yep.
Okay, I'm gonna ask Wayne Haldinger to give us the director of buildings and grounds to give us his annual report, which is always very thorough. Wherever you're comfortable with it.
Oh, he's got a toy. Careful, Cindy.
That's a gaga con, by the way. Radiation levels way up.
We got a grant from my insurance company. It's like $1,600. And what it measures is four different gases. Hydrogen sulfide, the major oxygen levels, the major combustion gas, the major carbon monoxide. And it's very handy. I've used it in this boiler room, as a matter of fact. We had an issue with CO leaking. And it proved that there's no carbon monoxide leak in the water, which is carbon monoxide agent was a dead, a killer. Just my annual facilities overview for the public schools on North Valley. I've done this a few times, but it's kind of, I speak for the buildings, the buildings don't speak for the schools, but I think I'm spoken to the buildings. Don't push me with the buttons. I renew manpower, buildings and grounds, I mean each individual school by school. We have 21 full-time employees, broken down by 16 school-based custodians. One and a half grounds workers, two van drivers with bus licenses, one and a half maintenance workers. And what they, one of the two half, half maintenance worker and half grounds worker is actually the same person. Very efficient, hard working, young men. We did hire a new employee. His name is Alex Harris, a few months ago. He's on probation for one year to supplement our cleaning needs at the 200,000 square foot high school. When the new middle school reopens, the total will be 270,000 square feet. And existing, three employees that are at existing middle school, old high school, by my calculations, should be sufficient to properly clean that school. We have 18 lawn staff at that time. The numbers that I've looked up, 32,000 square feet per custodian and 92,000 square feet per maintenance school. We're a little light on maintenance, but it's raining, we can shut, I can shut the door. Want to pass it back? We're a little light on maintenance, but everything's under warranty now and a movie for at least another year. So the scrub maintenance is pretty good. We have a summer, we have very productive and efficient summer cleaning program. Where we hire summer employees, basically mainly college or high school students. And the one full-time teacher that supplements our, was a lead person. Under buildings and grounds, we contribute, we've been up, we've all, we've been involved in the Miami Woods program for several years. And by doing what we do, we do as far as air quality monitoring, roof inspections, freezer prevention, and facility sound inspections, we've saved 4% on our insurance premiums annually. This is one item. We've been successfully receiving over 21,000 in past Miami France. Examples, asbestos safety awareness training, roof inspection program, infrared heat loss camera, septic system preventive maintenance program, and air quality test equipment. We have quite a bit of test equipment, but this is one. We can do quite a bit of our own air quality testing in-house. Although there's been times we've invited the state committee into the air quality testing course. They recently rented the high school, old, I mean, the old high school, middle school, and the little school. And nothing was of any major importance, but any recommendations are quickly reacted, reacted. Equipment upgrades, buildings and grounds, we replaced a 2003 truck club comments. It's not the exciting stuff, but it's exciting for me. A 2003 truck club combination with a brand-new 2014 F-450 truck club combination. And we replaced a used 2006 utility van with a new pickup truck for our maintenance crew. The little school, if any questions, I don't know. I'll be answering questions. We ripped out an old hitch over that the school was there for years and replaced it with, with help of the Department of Public Works. They helped to pour the footings and three benches. The parents used, well, we, we moved the script. We have three, three-year-old 96% efficiency gas fire condensing boilers. To me, they really are the best. They operate efficiently, the school is evenly heated. It's all computer-based. Generally, I can control it from home, my office, or anywhere I have equipment that I can control. Proposals are in place now to remove more asbestos floor tiles at the little school, this belt system, remove B-wing, and also in the future, we put in place the gym floor at some point. We have, we have a process of upgrading the gym lights. At the hood school, we are, as a matter of fact, we're working there on this coming Wednesday to work on more of the boiler room controls, which are also installed by the automated logic company, which are doing the high school, middle school. They have equipment at the Baptist school. At the little school, the high school, we're doing the hood school. It'll all be compatible, then we can talk to each other and I can control all of the heating, ventilation equipment. And we're considering doing the same gym lighting upgrade, the T5 fixtures at the boardroom. Green Indian gym, sort of gym music. The bachelor school, actually feels a warming, it feels a warming, doesn't it? This is in the ninth year of operations. It was opened in 2006. From my way of thinking, from a maintenance standpoint, it was a well-designed and efficiently operating school. And I equate that to my maintenance, annual maintenance budget. How much do I spend on a specific school? And this school consumes very little. Right now, the old high school consumes a large amount of money on this budget, trying to keep it operational. We just received reports from the town's water conservation consultant about upgrading some of the fixtures in the school to save more water. This was designed in '05, prior to any major water conservation efforts, and we're going to pursue that. The gym lights, all replaced, the high efficiency T5 for the rest of fixtures. And we got a $4,000 rebate from the RML V. The middle school, high school. We have not neglected the old high school, now middle school. We've taken care of it. We paint over during the summer. We painted walls, worked on heating system, and we worked on the... We painted walls, worked on heating system, and we worked on the, it's in great shape. Custodial staff did terrific job last summer. We replaced sparkles and will until this school ends in June. We moved the attached business office, when school closed in June, the middle school to the now middle school. All, anything to do with logistical needs, electrical, air conditioning, are all added to the whole of the school. And it's gonna be a full operation right through this whole school year. We had some issues with the auditorium, the heating system in the auditorium. Had a company come in and save us a huge amount of money, but we're still heating. It'll be okay through the heating season. The new 200,000 square foot high school opened in September 8th. This is current information. All HVAC systems are operational with a few exceptions. And this, we've had a few exceptions now since the school opened. And we're still working on some of the, it's a high-performance school, and we're still working on some of the, I'll call them, some, AJ and Mr. Dowd said their rooms have been sometimes chilly, and they're doing some kind of fine-tuning to keep everybody comfortable. It's coming, it's coming. The HVAC system is called displacement ventilation. Vent is the latest type of heating ventilation in that. There are no unit vents in the classroom, there's no motor noise, everything comes out of the ceiling, out of the walls, and it's just air flow. There's no motors running in the classroom. It's very quiet.
I just want to add on that, that if you're sitting in the gym, you can't, the gym's heated, you can't hear anything. There's no, you know, the old gym, there's no fans, there's nothing. It's so quiet.
If you look out in the gym, there's, it looks like a bunch of tubes, but they're all, they're swatted, and they're all, air actually blows them up. And they're lined with what they call nozzles, there's hundreds of nozzles where the warm air comes out of these nozzles. And I questioned the architect about, sure we have fans up there, you know, we don't, because we have, we have fans here, there's stratification, we're the hot air down, we don't need them up there. The way that's designed, and the way those nozzles are distributing the air, it is very comfortable, it's very efficiently heated, and I, actually, I remember feeling cooled in there, maybe seventy or sixty now, or something like that. It's very comfortable. It is pretty cool. The heating system, very similar to the little school, one of the larger units, they're four million BTMs each, high-efficiency gas, condensing boilers. We have had a few challenges with those. We have, we've had some alarm issues, but they're being worked on. The school is heating properly, we're working on, working on one that's brand-new. They're using some of the boilers to heat the existing middle school construction while it's being worked on. There are, they're not working right now, but there's two 300-ton chillers, which when they start, they're some jet engines, which chill, which we don't have anywhere else in the school department. They chill the air, they cool the air, it's conditioned, called conditioned air, not air conditioning, but conditioned air. If you go in a classroom and the chillers are on, and put your hand in front of this air distribution, you can feel air just drifting out of it. And that sufficiently cools an entire classroom, quite efficiently. It is a high-performance school. We're working for, towards gold, lead gold certification. We're silver now, we're working with lead gold. Because it's high-performance, it's designed so it runs itself. They try not to tinkle to any things, but it, it's very efficient. We're also looking at, down the road, maybe some solar panels on the roof, but right now, we're not considering because of construction. This may end report. Any questions? Just if you took a look at these outlets, and these outlets of this row here, if you go in many places, you'd probably see dirt come out of the outlets. Because look at these, they're, they're sparkled, they're clean. We changed the filters. We have very dedicated custodial staff, maintenance staff, that's, that's what I'm saying. Questions, comments?
Questions from the committee.
I have a comment. The boilers, I understand that we were at about eighty percent of the capacity of all three boilers on that super pole day we had.
Last Wednesday night, and I put it out as a real test for us. They programmed everything, because we're so cold, it was going to be so cold, and I programmed everything to stay on, on. Partially because of the sprinkler systems, depending on sprinklers, and we need done zero below, and I called German for nine, quarter past five, they said everything's ready for action on Thursday, it was a cold, cold.
That was our first really, really cold day.
We'll test all the schools without exception.
Like doing heating, all of the middle, new middle school up there.
Well, most schools are working fine, you know, probably all modulating it, all three modulating between sixteen and seventy percent, all three are perking on, racing, perking on.
Any other questions or comments?
I have just a comment. Just, you know, I've worked with Wayne for a long time, and always have been very impressed with his level of dedication and the dedication of his staff. But since becoming superintendent, I really, I have to publicly commend and thank Wayne for the good job that he does and the leadership of his department. I get a near, would you say a near daily briefing from you, right? Pretty much a morning briefing. You're just very, very dedicated, very conscientious, Wayne. I know that so many people appreciate that, and I want you to know how much we do appreciate it.
Thank you.
Yeah, I'd like to comment too. I've been working with Wayne even longer than Mr. Bernard has, including on this building, and the little school, high school project. But I think that a lot of us tend to take for granted the condition that these schools are in. We go to the old high school, which is now the middle school, or even the middle school before it was demolished. That building, I can tell you, I can attest to the fact that nothing had been done to that building in fifty years. And Wayne somehow, and his staff, and this isn't just Wayne, but he's the boss, he's the leader, but his staff do an incredible job in all of our buildings. I mean, inside, outside, I get comments all the time. I talk to people in other school districts who complain about the custodial staff. They just do a tremendous job here. And Wayne doesn't just, it's just not what you see, the, keeping the buildings clean, it's the efficiencies that he demands. I mean, he's, he's so conscientious about, you know, efficiencies as far as heating and cooling and light and everything. He's on top of everything that happens to the district. We're really fortunate not only to have Wayne, but also to have the staff, they do a tremendous job.
Well, that's what I, I think you said, Wayne sets high standards, and those standards are adhered to. And a simple thing, if you walk into the current middle school, you know, which is a million years old, and you look at the floors and you say, wow, my floor is at home, we're about three years old, and these floors are better than mine, and the thing's been there for sixty years. And it's, it's that, that, you know, Wayne's been here for sixty years, so he's, you know, in those sixty, sixty more. But, but he's able to, and I still remember when Catherine Craven came in from MSBA, and she couldn't believe the condition. She said, both these schools are completely inadequate, you need to replace them, but the condition they're in is astounding. And we got extra money because of that, because of the maintenance.
And Wayne's staff worked almost around the clock to get the new high school building open for September 8th. There was a lot of work that hadn't been done in there. Now, since he's learned to be able to control everything from home, we always see him once every two weeks. Other than that, he's done a tremendous job, he really has. Wayne, we appreciate the report, the greatest confidence in you, and just keep up some work.
Great, we appreciate it. Thanks very much.
Thanks a lot.
Okay, next on the agenda, we have Marcy Bailey here, community impact team, and Marcy's gonna make the presentation regarding North Reading Night Off.
Does everyone have a handout of the North Reading?
They have a copy of the proclamation and the flyer.
It was in our package.
That's what I gave him. You have something else?
Well, I'm just gonna give a handout of the John Matalman presentation.
Okay, very good. Yes, they do not.
Well, thank you for granting us time on your agenda. I think I know everyone here, but by way of introduction, I'm Marcy Bailey. I'm a member of the K-12 Subcommittee of the County Impact Team. Also, we have here tonight in the third row, Scott Buckley, who's also a member of our team, as is Mr. Bernard. We're charged with quality of life issues for students and families of K-12. And during the past few years, we've had the good fortune to bring a speaker on social media safety. We've also brought a speaker on teen dating violence. During those talks, we took a survey to see if people liked those presentations, but also to see what else was of concern to families. And both times, it came up that time management and stress and family time was a prime concern for families. So we looked at what we, how we could address that, and one small but important way is to give families a night off, a night to spend time together. This has been done in communities throughout the country. Locally, it's been done very successfully in Nida for several years. And the idea is on March 12th, which is between sports seasons, unless there's a playoff game, and if there's a playoff game, everyone will have the night off to go together. We checked with Mr. Bernard and athletic director Dave Johnson to come up with that March 12th was a good night when there was no other direct conflict known. And what we're asking everyone to do, the general government, the school department, we're asking leagues, local businesses, such as dance schools that cater to children, to cease all activities as of 5:00 PM on that night, so Jerry Venezia can take his wife out to dinner.
No, cheers.
No poker, no eating. No, you all, you all work very hard, seriously, and need, need a night off as well. So the idea is to give families a chance to unplug, to eat dinner together, without a frenzy of one, one child eats at five o'clock, the, you know, the parent puts dinner on the table, runs out to pick up another child, and bring that child home to eat, and then go out, you know, for another activity at seven o'clock. Very, very important to take the time to talk with your family, to, to break bread together, and to enjoy a night without pressure. So we're asking you to join in and proclaiming this North Reading Night Off. And for, Mr. Bernard, I know, has signed on and will encourage, through the principals and the teachers, to eliminate, limit, if not eliminate, homework that evening, to take, again, pressure off and allow families to enjoy the night together. We are going to approach local restaurants and hope that they'll give discounts to families. It's not a fundraiser, but again, allowing if a parent is rushing home from work and wants to spend, have dinner with their family, make it a little more affordable for them to either go out to a local restaurant in North Reading or to get some takeout. And that would also be a good partnership with the restaurants to generate some, some business for their community as well. So that's, that's North Reading Night Off, and we'll ask you to issue that proclamation as an aside while I have the floor. One week before that, we're having a speaker come in, John Matalman, who's the Youth Services Director in Nida, and he's also a parenting expert, he has his own private practice in counseling families as well. And he's going to speak on the secret life of a Massachusetts teenager. And it's really, it's an adult-only presentation, it's free, and it's aimed at parents to learn, to help them in talking to their teenagers, and very importantly, in listening to their teenagers, and how to really hear what their teenagers are saying, how to understand the pressures their teenagers are over, are under, and respond to those appropriately and constructively. So that's one week before, so hopefully everyone will attend that, and then on March 12th, take the night off and send it with their family and talk and listen. So that's what we have coming up. I'll entertain any questions, and otherwise, I would love your support, we would love your support.
It's a great idea, Marcy, for me, a great night off, as we're hoping it's gone, and I'm the only one home. But, though, this is a great idea. Do you want to read the proclamation, or do you want me to read it?
I would allow the school committee to read it if you're up for that.
Okay. This is the proclamation, this is proposed. Whereas North Reading Community Impact Team works to identify factors that have a negative impact on the quality of life for all community members, from our young children to our senior citizens, and to implement solutions to solve the underlying problems. Whereas North Reading Community Impact Team is a partnership between the North Reading Police Department, Youth Services, Elder Services, School Department, Parks and Recreation, Fire Department, and Board of Selectment. Whereas North Reading is a busy, thriving town, but community impact team surveys show that time management is a special key factor impacting North Reading families. Where studies show that children and teens and families who eat dinner together frequently have low incidence of drug and alcohol use, and it is the goal of the North Reading Community Impact Team to support healthy relationships and strong communications with families. Now therefore, we, the North Reading School Committee, can hereby proclaim March 12th, 2015, to be North Reading Night Off. We urge that all school department activity, including homeworks, force practices, school activities, community meetings be suspended beginning at 5:00 PM on March 12th, 2015, so that all North Reading families, young and old, cannot like it, slow down, to spend important time together, during a real conversation, and not pressure family time. So I ask for a motion to adopt this proclamation, as read.
Film. Motion from Cliff.
Yes.
And a second from Janine. Any further discussion?
Yes. I think there's a couple of problems, but that's one of them is that this is one day that's ought to happen every month, minimum. And it ought to be set up so that nothing conflicts with people, it's set up in advance every month.
Who would have ever thought thirty or forty years ago would have to, need something like this? It would never have prepped of it. It's just different, you know, everything's different, so.
But we do have a motion from Janine, and a second from, I'm sorry, a motion from Cliff and a second from Janine. Hearing no further, the Scott calls, favorably say aye.
Aye.
Calls none, motion carries by a vote of aye.
Thank you, Marcy. Please leave your.
Aye, aye.
I really would appreciate if there was an effort to make it happen every month, because this is a, this is a big problem. And I know that homework is, is incredibly weighty, and it, you know, I've been, I've been trying to preach that all the way along here the last few years, that there ought to be some relief, and I understand that's a purview of individual teachers, and they don't collaborate, they ought to get on Google Docs, and figure out just what they're giving each kid, and that, you know, that they say, well, it's only fifteen minutes. Of course, fifteen minutes, if you know the subject material, and the advancement, it could be trying to learn it, it might be a couple hours. And I think that, that, you know, the effort on homework reduced, and at least once a month, there ought to be a night that is clean for all events.
It's amazing how homework, depending on the steward, we're on board with this, we're on board with this, but you've got work ahead of you.
Well, yeah, I'd love to do it once a month, but we can't, you know, we're the folks that have to determine that, and teachers are under pressure too. So, I agree, I have a daughter in high school, she often does not get enough sleep by the time she finishes her activity, activities and her homework. She does not have eight hours to sleep, she may not have seven hours to sleep.
She should be getting ten.
Yes, and she should be getting ten. So, I agree, you know, we all, as families, do the best we can. One night is a start. If it works out, and it's meant with positively, maybe we can do it two nights, you know, maybe we can do it two nights. But you have to start somewhere, and we're gonna start on March 12th, so we appreciate that support.
Thank you.
I would like to add to John Matalman. We are going to do it at the high school, we've reserved both the distance learning lab and the Performing Arts Center, and depending on how many preregistrations we have, we'll choose a room. That night, preregistration is not required, it's encouraged for that reason to help us choose a room. And at northreadingcit.com, the Community Impact Team website, there's a link to sign up. So if you encourage anyone you see who would like to attend, use that link, so that will help us plan for the evening.
Thank you, Marcy.
Okay, thank you, Marcy.
Okay, next on the agenda, I'm gonna ask Mr. Bernard to present the academic calendar for 2015, 2016.
Thank you, Mr. Bernard. So your packet is a first draft of the academic calendar, as you said, for 2015 and 16. I don't think that there's anything terribly earth-shattering, new to you here. The administrative council and I reviewed this at our meeting last Thursday, and recognizing that the opening of the new middle school, we might be up against some of the deadlines like we were for the opening of the new high school, we reflected that in the calendar, but I think, I think the calendar essentially speaks for itself. If you have any particular questions.
Questions or comments about the calendar?
Okay, question. And I think we've done this since I've been on the school committee, but why do we have early release days when we have evening conferences, but we don't have early release days at the high school? At the middle school, elementary, we have early release days, we have evening conferences. At the high school, we have evening conferences, we don't have early release days.
Right, I think the belief has been that the, the high school trades the early release days for mid-year and final exams.
Okay, okay.
Any other questions or comments?
So John, the first day of school will be September 9th.
The first day of school will be September 9th, correct, Wednesday?
The other question or comment I have is for consideration next year, once, after next year, once both schools are open, that we think about the traditional opening day of school, we've had always after Labor Day, and think about maybe consider, at least taking a look at that. I think Michael's survey of most communities start before Labor Day in our area, and I, I'm not saying that I exploit that, but I think we ought to think about it for 2016, 2017, yeah. 2017, yeah.
I think Labor Day would be reverting back to September 1st and 2nd for those who are smart. They will, they will.
I'm concerned about the last day of school potentially being the 28th.
You know, I mean, it's, it's, it's a mild concern, I mean, it is, it is getting close to that June 30th day, but.
A little bit of gambling. We, we have school, a good part of the winter that hasn't lasted yet, right?
No, this is next year.
Oh, that's right.
Remember, we'll be, if we have no stodds, it would be the 20th, so.
Correct. Yeah, I think it is a little, it's a little bit of a gamble, but I, I think we definitely benefited from a little bit of breathing room in September.
Oh, I think we need it next year.
So I think to build that info next year is a smart thing.
Just makes sense, dude.
I think so.
I have a feeling we're right here.
Every day we go.
Right.
We certainly did this past September, so I think it's, I think it's the smart thing we're doing.
Good point, though. If there's no further comments, I'd ask for a motion to approve the.
Should we, is this a draft, should we approve this, or?
You can, I think a vote is appropriate.
Move to approve this calendar.
For 2015-16.
Second.
A motion by Cliff, a second by Mel, any further discussion? Hearing none, all's in favor, please say aye. Aye, opposed, none, motion carries by vote of aye. I'm just going to jump to the SEEM collaborative articles of agreement, then we'll go back to the first page, and a couple of things we need to cover on the first page of the agenda. Now, again, I'll ask the superintendent to present the SEEM collaborative agreement.
Thank you, Mr. Venezia. So, as I think you all know, North Reading is a member of two collaboratives, the Marshall Education Consortium and the SEEM Collaborative. And not long ago, you adopted the Articles of Agreement for the Marshall Education Consortium, and also took a vote to appoint me as the district's representative to the Board of Directors, essentially, and asking for the same thing, for our participation in the SEEM Collaborative. I would like to just mention that there is, I think, one of, one of the greatest benefits that the district realizes is that we're able to provide educational opportunities for students with special needs that just cannot be provided within the home district. That certainly is a significant gain. From the financial aspect of it, our annual subscription fee to be a member of the, of the SEEM Collaborative is $5,500, and I asked the finance director at the Collaborative to provide me with, with the savings that the district realized by being a member. And in the last fiscal year, that savings was, is just over $50,000. There certainly is a substantial economic benefit to, to being a member too. So my, my recommendation is that we continue to participate as a member district in the SEEM Collaborative, and I would ask, unless anyone else would, would prefer to take on the, the role of member of the Board of Directors, that I would certainly be willing to take that.
Do we have any volunteers? We could always volunteer, Karen.
That's a pretty good ROI, spending $5,500 to save.
Any questions regarding the Articles of Agreement, so collaborative, I want to take two votes. The first vote is going to be to endorse the Articles of Agreement, so I'd ask for a motion for that.
Go.
Motion by Cliff, and a second by Janine. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all's in favor, please say aye. Aye, opposed, none, motion carries by vote of aye. The second vote is to appoint John as our president of the Board of Directors in the SEEM Collaborative.
Go.
The only way to motion by Cliff, a second by Mel, any further discussion? Hearing none, all's in favor, please say aye. Aye, opposed, none, motion carries by vote of aye. Okay, we're going to jump back to the first page of the agenda, into continuing business. I'm going to ask the superintendent to give us a, an update on the little school, high school project.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Chairman. So work is, is progressing well at the new middle school. The most recent update I can provide to you is that the window installation is going extremely well. They're approximately, our project manager, Jeff Wenning, indicates to me that there are about 70% of the windows installed. The overarching goal here is to be, at least to have the middle school, I use their term "weather tight" by the end of this month, so that much of the interior work can take place over the coming winter months. The exterior brickwork is ongoing, the west side of the two-story portion of the middle school and the north side of the central office area will be among the last portions to be completed. The interior concrete slabs in the middle school have been poured, this work is now complete. Interior plumbing, electrical, fire protection, HVAC work continues to progress in the two-story portion of the middle school. The interior layout and framing of walls in the two-story portion of the middle school is ongoing. The guardrail installation on the main access road has been completed with the exception of the asphalt patching, that will take place in the spring when the asphalt plants reopen. And I think it's, it's worth noting for all of you and for the community that we are continuing as a, as a district to, to work with the contractors on the punch of the items at the new high school. It is a pretty extensive list, very typical, but a great deal of work was, was done over the, over the holiday vacation weeks, and I'm pleased to, to inform you that I am confident that the, that folks are working with us to address the items and that the work continues on a yearly basis.
Thank you, Mr. Bernard. Any questions, comments, or additional information? Cliff?
As of last Thursday, the decking was completed out on the central office portion of the wall. Of course, it was pretty nasty weather since then, but for the next four days, I would expect we might just get the roof, you know, the rest of that, the rest of that. We had to wait until we did that before they could finish the area out from the, above where the, where story is, and move that from there out. Been waiting for that, so. Once that's done, they will have the roof completed with those, that window percentage, the rest of the windows are basically using for access for renovation for the end. But they had, they had heat actually all the way out to the central office last, last Thursday.
Really?
Not a lot of heat, but about 35 degrees in there. The area that would, has been a major concern was the old boiler room area, and that area has turned into a bit of a problem because of water, the old, lower area. We were holding off, trying to work around that, but they, they decided last week to cover that with decking. They've got that decked over, got the wall in, and we've got a panel over the window area, so they could remove that and whatever. We're, we're making good progress, and I think, you know, the, the goal has been to enclose that area in heat day, and, and once we, once we're there, we're kind of home free, getting things done. And at this point, since it's not yet the middle of the month, and we've got four good days this week ahead of us, I think we're ready.
Good.
Moving along. Mel?
I've heard from a couple of parents, I've been involved myself in a number of different traffic jams at different times at the high school, sometimes during the day, a lot of times at night leading events. I just want to let parents know that, one, we're still in a construction area, so, you know, the, the traffic patterns that we have now are not the traffic patterns that we're going to have when the project is complete. Two, the administration has been working with the police department and with the project manager to adjust the traffic lights at night. One of the issues is, at night, the traffic light is set to basically let three cars at a time out of the access road, and then it turns right again. And hopefully, within the next week or so, we'll be able to have that so it lets 70, 80, 10 cars out at a time, because it's resulting in backups all the way back up the access road after games. And I know in the end of January, we have a basketball game, and the Peter Pan show will be on at the same time at, on one night, so I'm hoping by then, I'm sure by then we'll have that traffic light situation worked out.
Where are we going to park them?
Then we have shuttles, right?
There is a shuttle from the middle school parking lot scheduled for the, they're both Friday night performances at Peter Pan, they're also playing basketball games, one boys the first Friday, girls the second, we're going to have shuttles.
And I think if we used lots of the middle school, we should be fine.
In fact, we've done that in the past with other events, so.
We've got shuttles a lot there from the middle school.
I am hoping that the traffic light is adjusted by then, hoping for a 6:00 to 10:00 PM. Right, that would be all the time, seven days a week, it's not just for these performances or these games, and it's, we're hoping that to be similar.
Because if you're not turning right there, it can take you a real long time to get out of there.
Yes, it can, it can.
Okay, and just a reminder, I believe the next meeting of the secondary school building meeting is next Tuesday, the 20th of January.
Correct.
At 5:30 PM, and that's at the high school, just the sort of, okay, that's the next meeting. And that's a public meeting, everyone's welcome to attend. Next on the agenda, we have our policy, FPCA and the accompanying regulations, FPCR. We have these on for our second reading tonight, and ask if there's any comments regarding the policy and the regulations as they currently appear. We had a first reading on these previously, I think, in October. Any comments?
I have a couple of corrections.
Go ahead.
And I think we can still look over it tonight. On the first sentence, it says, "School committee believes naming a school or school-related", I don't think that should be a comma after the school, it should be either a hyphen, "school-related", or just take the comma out, I think we take the comma out. On the next paragraph, second sentence, there should be a comma after the word "community". Were you looking for a comma? Next paragraph, after the word "community", there should be a comma. And then, inside on the regulations, on the first, number one, it says, "If a person agreed to propose to the school committee through a formal written, written notice a desire to name a school or school-related facility under the jurisdiction of the school committee, or the school committee of its own initiative", I think we need something after there. I don't think you can just say, "The school committee, or the school committee of its own initiative proposes naming the facility."
Right, proposes naming a school or a school-related facility.
Right, so we need to add that in there.
I'm sorry. On the, on number one.
Yeah. Third line.
It says on the third line, "The school committee of its own initiative."
Yes.
Okay, desires to name a school or a school-related facility.
Right, you need to.
That would be included in the, right, right.
And that's it.
Do we have any other recommendations as far as changes? Any other recommendations? Okay, again, I want to thank Janine and Cliff for all the work they've done on this policy. I think we can take one vote if there's no recommended changes other than what Mr. Webster's raised. So as amended, we'll vote, vote on the policy and the regulations, take a motion.
So moved, moved to approve the new, the revised naming of schools and school-related facilities, FPCA, second reading.
Motion by Mel, a second by Janine, on both FPCA and FCAa. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all's in favor, please say aye. Aye, opposed, none, motion carries by vote of aye. Okay, that's done. Thank God. All right, we're going to move to minutes, we have a number of minutes to approve, and I'm going to ask for a motion for the November 10th, 2014 executive session minutes.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion by Cliff, second by Mel, any further discussion? Hearing none, all's in favor, please say aye. Aye, opposed, none, motion carries for a nothing. November 10th, 2014, open session meeting.
Move to approve.
Second. Motion by Mel, a second by Cliff, any further discussion? Hearing none, all's in favor, please say aye. Aye, opposed, none, motion carries for a nothing. November 24th, 2014, open session minutes.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion by Mel, a second by Cliff, any further discussion? Hearing none, all's in favor, please say aye. Aye, opposed, none, motion carries for a nothing. November, December 8th, 2014, executive session meeting.
Move to approve.
Second.
Okay, well, I'm sorry, Janine, but. Motion by Mel, a second by Cliff, any further discussion? Hearing none, all's in favor, please say aye. Aye, opposed, none, motion carries by vote of aye. And finally, we have the December 8th, 2014, open session minutes. That's Janine.
Second.
Okay, motion by Janine, a second by Mel, any further discussion? Hearing none, all's in favor, please say aye. Aye, opposed, none, motion carries for a nothing. Budget update, we have Mr. Finally here, to our audience and operations.
Thank you. So, this evening, the January FY15 budget report was included in your packet. Happy to report that the FY15 budget continues to be in very good standing, we're on halfway through fiscal year. On the expense side of things, again, all the majority of expenses remain within budget lines. Some of the highlights this evening of the report, we continue to have funds available in the special education cost center, in particular, through tuitions and transportation costs, there are some available funds as a result of there being a couple of less students that are in outside placements and that have required transportation that we forecasted during the budget season. And as you recall, we also prepaid tuitions, we were able to receive the amount we had budgeted as an offset of our prepayments with year-end funds when we closed out fiscal 14. This has provided some additional flexibility in, in the budget this year that is, will help us addressing and pursuing costs that need in this fiscal year. We continue to monitor the cost of utilities closely, especially at the new high school. And to date, you know, projections indicate that we anticipate the cost of utilities, we remain within budget ranges. Again, it's very early in the season, as we move through the next few months, we continue to pay close attention to that. So it's still kind of unclear or early to report that there may be funds to repurpose in this area as we've had in the past, but I'm happy to report that even within the high school, what we're seeing so far, what we budgeted, you know, will certainly be within budget ranges.
We haven't seen anything shocking as far as electricity.
I have not. Electricity, electricity is up, but it, it certainly was up in September and October, which we've leveled out, and the projections will be well within budget that I'm seeing right now. We haven't seen, you know, the gas bill yet, we were testing some gas bill, which would be minimal, and that shift from electricity, from gas to electricity has occurred, we haven't seen a significant gas bill after the high school yet, but I'm anticipating that one will come at the end of this month, and that will be important, you know, in ways and bills to take a look at, and take a look at the usage and so forth, but, again, what I'm seeing this year will be within budget, budget ranges, and, you know, so far, things look like they're in good shape.
They, they do, I'm monitoring what's being taken through the construction.
Correct, so, yeah, exactly, so, right, so actually, the construction, the contractors handled the majority of the heating that we've seen to date, so we are closely marked on that.
I wouldn't be, I wouldn't be nervous about having two boilers running at 80% on that heavy, but running the third one at 80%.
Right.
So it's got to be all going up there and into the atmosphere.
Sure, sure. So yes, but you heard me tonight, he's closely keeping an eye on it, he tracks everything very, very closely, very confident in his ability to, to set the occupancy schedules as marked, to, to save as much as we can.
Thank you, Massey. Any questions for Massey?
Well, moving on, just a couple more things I want to mention, so the food service program, I do want to mention that I'm still waiting in the process of, still waiting for the December final numbers, we're reconciling December, but November was closed out at the time of the report. The trend is, continues to be on a positive trend, we, our daily sales, sales and reimbursement dollars are up as a result of increased launch participation in à la carte sales, really throughout, throughout the district. The high school is certainly seeing a bump up by about, you know, 7% to 10%, you know, each day. Currently, the loss at this point is about $9,200 less than it was at this time last year, which is a, a good trend. Both Superintendent Bernard and myself have asked representatives from Chartwell's to be present at the January 26th meeting, we're about halfway through, through the year. As you recall, we have a one-year agreement, so we're still in this analysis, you know, phase this year, we're, we're certainly paying close attention to the numbers, as well as to some of the highlights and the challenges of the programs. We've asked them to come and present an update to the full committee at the January 26th meeting, so, so they'll, they'll be present at the next meeting. But I think overall, I think, you know, what I've seen is, is positive, there's certainly some new initiatives being done, I know the high school, you know, they have a breakfast program, you know, coffee's a little bit of a project, things happening. On the payroll side, happy to report, there's nothing significant really to report at this time. The administrative line is now expecting a surplus, that's a result of some of the administrative vacancies that, that have occurred this, this fiscal year. Custodian line is, slight deficit, that's re, as a result of the new custodian that we hired and appointed earlier in the year. We're still seeing the trend of extended absence as a result of, and the need to appoint long-term substitutes, so it would just, it would be important that we continue to track those, but all payroll projections at this time are very close to the budgeted amount, so we're, you know, things continue to go pretty smoothly in this.
Any questions, Mike?
Thank you.
Next on the agenda, we're going to ask the superintendent to update the school committee on hiring a permanent director through personnel services and the posting of school, post-school psychologists.[1757.73]
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So, I'm pleased to tell you that Dr. Daly is in the very finest stages of forming the interview committee for the position of director of people personnel services. Applications are coming in. I posted, you might recall, just before the holidays to advertise for the position in the hope of an early start to this process to secure a permanent special ed director before too long. So, that committee will start its work in early February. Mr. Bowers is going to represent the school committee on that search committee. I also found the need early on, my tender superintendent, to seek an additional school psychologist to work with students in special needs in grade six to 12. I've worked with the chairman on the advertising of this position. I have today, as a matter of fact, a recommendation on my desk for a candidate to fill that position. And I hope that she will begin her work just around, on or before February 1st.
Budget-wise, we're okay.
Budget-wise, we're good. Yes.
Any questions for superintendent? Thank you, John. Bits of donations. We have one from the North Running Music Group, this is a lot of $800. Very generous donation. I've asked for a motion to accept with gratitude. And a motion by Cliff, and a second by Janine.
I might want to note that this is to rent the microphones. I believe that's for Peter Pan.
This is the microphone, right?
Yeah.
Again, I know that the district, you know, the secondary school building is also looking into being able to purchase some of these, so we're not going to have to rent them. Okay, we have a motion, we have a second. All those who say aye. Aye opposed, none, motion carried, four to nothing.
Cliff just kind of whispered to me, I think we have, I mean, I don't know if 800 bucks is how much it costs to buy them or that's just the rental, but I think we ought to look into...
Well, we've got some, we've got people working on it.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, the superintendent and Allison that we're working on and looking at.
I asked her, she's basically when the show is over right now, she's, she's going to put in some pricing.
I'm sure there's a lot of air mics that just go on.
They add, they add a lot of them. And they've got some good prices on them, too, for them. So, it's just a question of how much we can raise and how much we can buy.
This was the last thing we were going to ever do that we might get. Right. But, you know, it's highly likely that we'll do something.
We're going to be using that theater a lot.
I can guarantee it.
It's a lot of sensitive items.
We have a second donation, and again, very much appreciated, from the North Running Little School Parents Association, a lot of $800. I'm going to ask for a motion to accept with gratitude. Motion by Cliff, and a second by Janine. Any further discussion? Are you not also favorably say aye? Aye opposed, none, motion carried, four to nothing. We have some committee reports, starting with the athletics subcommittee, which met twice since we last had a school committee meeting, December 16th and January 18th. Mel and I were both at that meeting, as was the superintendent. Mel, do you want, I think...
There's one main project. Before we get into that main project, numbers are up, participation numbers are up at the high school winter sports, I think.
Especially track.
Twenty or 30 more students, the track teams are, which unfortunately, one of the things we looked at was possibly hiring some assistant coaches for track, went to track, but the budget just isn't there at this time. The revolving fund, we're basically looking, we're not going to have much left for revolving fund at the end of this year. We'd like to have a little balance, and that's going to be a very little balance, but participation is up, which is good. But the big item, and I'll let you jump into it.
I think that the thing that we've been working on, and we have another meeting scheduled actually for next Thursday, which we will see upcoming on the agenda, but we've been working on, again, a proposal to build a turf practice field where the, our grass practice field is called for a part of the secondary school building project. After the demolition is completed for the old high school, which is now the middle school, we have a designed practice field, which is essentially the size of a football field or bigger, actually.
It's actually a full soccer field.
Full soccer field, and also a softball complex that are designed and part of the project to be installed in that location where the, the old high school is right now. We've been looking into the athletic subcommittee, this, whether or not we will find private funding sufficient to build a turf practice field, in other words, an unofficial turf field, similar to a football field that we now have at the high school. We think that would be far more efficient and work a lot better than a grass field, which again, is very hard to maintain with the amount of usage that we will see. So, that's in the planning stages. We've actually met with Gale Corporation, which is, which are the people that built the turf football field that we currently have at the high school, as well as the people who did the project over at Link Field, where they built a turf football field, two turf soccer, lacrosse, field hockey fields, a turf baseball field, and a turf softball field. It's not like we're trying to keep up with the Joneses, but I think that makes all sense in the world at this stage of the project to see if it's feasible for us to do this unofficial turf field. But it's going to have to be done by private donations. We have that, a number of proposals by Gale that they've given to us. We're reviewing them, we'll look at them again next Thursday's meeting.
And that's the key issue. We don't, we don't have the funding within the project to put a turf practice field there. Grass practice field just isn't practical. You can put the best grass in the world in, you could irrigate it, and it gets used probably seven days a week, eight hours a day, and after two or three months, it's just not usable anymore. It turns into a dust bowl.
It's like a sand bowl.
Exactly, right. And so, you know, what the hope is, is that once we, if we look at some, we look at some of the proposals, we agree to one. The hope is, we can see if there's interest out there to get some public fund, private funding to do the project.
And I want to emphasize that. This is not taxpayers' money. It's not from the project. It's private funding. We're trying to do a collaborative effort that would include the school department, the recreation department, and hopefully some of the youth athletic teams. So, if anybody knows anybody that's interested in perhaps making a donation or being supportive of this project, they can let us know.
Yeah, and I should add, it's similar, you know, what we're looking to do is something similar to what we did with Parks and Rec at our current turf field, where both Parks and Rec and the school department would have access to the field. We'd have first, you know, priority would be school programs, but as is now, where lacrosse uses the turf field every Sunday in the spring, youth football uses the turf field almost every night from August through mid-November.
And it's potentially revenue-producing, too. Because recreation actually leases or rents out the turf field that we have now to different groups and organizations.
So, that's the big thing we're focusing on.
Any other comments? We also had a finance planning team meeting on last Friday, January 9th. That's for those of you who don't know, it's the chairman and vice chairman of the board selecting the finance committee, the school committee meeting on the superintendent, the director of business operations for the school department, the town administrator, and the director of finance for the town side. And what we did was we reviewed the revenue projections for this coming fiscal year. It's really the state of flux at this point in time. We don't know. Everything's essential and dependent upon the state aid that we're going to get from the Commonwealth. Everything else is pretty much average, I think, John, that's my recollection, excise tax and fees and things of that nature. So, really, it's all dependent on the state, the state aid that we're going to get from the governor's budget and then from the House and Senate budget. It's too early to know what that is. Right now, we're not that optimistic about having a pull-up and ready-to-work with what we had for last year, so.
And it's a bit of a slow key.
But, yeah, it's going to be tight. Again, we are working, the school department is working on their budget. Over the next several weeks, we'll probably go public with our proposed FY16 budget. So, Cliff, you want to add anything to that?
No, I think John just did.
No? I think that's okay representation.
Subcommittee schedule. We have a policy subcommittee scheduled, a meeting scheduled for January 15th at 2:30 p.m. Athletic subcommittee scheduled for January 15th at 3:30 p.m. Another athletic subcommittee meeting scheduled for January 20th at 12:30 p.m. Secondary school building committee has already stated this next Tuesday, January 20th at 5:30. We have a board and board of directors meeting scheduled for January 22nd at 7 o'clock. A finance planning team meeting, the next one is February 13th at 8:15 a.m. That's the superintendent, if he has any administrative report.
I do, Mr. Chairman. Thank you. Just a couple of items. First is, Mr. Colleen spoke to you, and you had a very nice presentation by the students and the teacher on those who went to the Governor Baker's inauguration on last Thursday. I just want to acknowledge the efforts of the principals to coordinate that at each school, and also publicly thank Representative Jones for including North Rennes. I received a couple of nice emails, several pictures, either emailed or tweeted to my superintendent's Twitter account. It was a very, very nice experience. I think everybody really enjoyed themselves, and it really helped to just kind of dismiss the idea of how cold it was. They completely put that out of their mind last Thursday.
We actually had, so, two of our students, that picture was in the Globe North segment yesterday with that Charlie Governor Baker basically sticking his head in at the last minute, and it was a picture of the two girls, and there was Governor Baker's head coming forward as they snapped the picture.
I like how the kids call him Charlie.
It was a really nice day. All five schools were represented. It was really a nice, I think there'll be a nice picture in the transcript on Thursday. We invited law tourists to come to the middle school. Everybody gathered before they left on the bus. It was really nice, so. I do want to just, I'm hoping, Dan, you can give us a little ink on the park informational forums that Dr. Daly will be posting on January 21st and January 22nd. The elementary school forum will be the one on the 21st. It'll be in this room at the Bachelor's School at 6:30. The secondary level park informational forum will be held at the distance learning lab at the high school. We marketed these forums very well, I think, through my email blast. It was in my superintendent's news letter, so I'm hoping we can continue to get the word out leading up to next week. Thank you, Dan. I just, for the benefit of the committee, I want you to know that I hosted an initial meeting last Friday with Robert Lambert of PNA, with Patrick Daly, Kathleen O'Connell, Michael Loney, Michael Connelly. We've started to plan for the move of the middle school to its new school. So, I just, I just want you to be aware that that is very much on our radar. We've scheduled a second meeting to be held on January 23rd. And I think it's fair to say that we probably will be meeting very regularly for the next six or seven months to make sure we have a smooth and efficient move, have everything ready for, for September. So, I just want you to be aware that that is something we are, we are working toward. The last thing I wanted to mention to you tonight, and there are two ladies here this evening, Mrs. Sharp and Mrs. Harrington. You might recall back in October, there were some parents, I think it was actually Superintendent Willis's last meeting with all of you, that there was some discussion around the kindergarten programs offered at the district. I'm happy to say that Mr. Connelly and I have had a series of meetings since that time, and we are going to continue to meet with Mrs. Harrington and Mrs. Sharp. I think we, it's fair to say we've had some very good and productive conversation. We are going to do a formal presentation for the committee and a public at the January 26th meeting. We're back in the distance learning lab at the high school. We'd like to show you some work that we've done on the district and elementary school websites, and some changes we have proposed going forward. I think they're all very, very positive. I think the ladies are pleased, and we hope to have some other folks at the meeting on the 26th to hear and see some of the work that's been going on. The one thing that I would like to announce for tonight is that, because there is the parent information on this coming Thursday, is, and I want to thank Michael and his business office staff for working toward a restructuring of the payment plan for the tuition that folks have to pay for the full day kindergarten. The cost is not changing, but it is broken out over essentially five payments, which had been, had been one, one initial registration payment and then two sizable payments of $2,000 each. We spread those out a little bit.
How can we charge interest?
We spread that out, we spread that out through February. We were doing so well. So, we spread that out to four payments leading up to February 1st of the given school year. And I think, you know, for the obvious reason, just to give folks a little bit better chance to plan for that and to absorb that, that cost. So, I, I don't want to speak to the ladies, but I think our opinions are, the meetings have been going very well. I think we've met three or four times. We have some other ideas that we're working through that I think are all geared to be very, very positive, and we'd like to just take a little bit of time at the next school committee and just show you the work that's been done.
I still like to, I know you're, you and Michael, you're starting initial work on the initial team on the budget for next year. You know, I'm not saying that we can reduce tuitions, but I would really like to take a close look at that. I know right now it's something that the finances are going to be tight next year, but I think, I think we ought to look at that closely as well as, you know, one of the other key items is looking closely at the staffing at the, at the high school next year. I think those are two critical areas that we should, you know, look at. Not saying that we can reduce tuition, but I think it's important we ought to at least give a good consult coming into the next few years.
You could stop.
Right. Exactly.
All their friends out. Thank you, John. Do you have anything? Yes, sir.
I just had one comment to add to that, not even just about the, the cost of it, but also just allowing everybody to have access to it if they wanted to. I haven't really been involved too much, but I know a lot of what's going on, and I think one of the big concerns that I had was just not even having access if you wanted full day kindergarten, that if there wasn't enough for another full class, that certain number of kids wouldn't even be offered that. And so, I think, even if, from my perspective, even if the first step is making sure that everybody's guaranteed it if they wanted it, and, you know, and eating some of that cost, I think just in the cost consideration, I think that's something that should be considered as well, along with the overall tuition for everybody, just making sure everybody has the access if they wanted it.
Good point. And that's something we'll address on Saturday, 26th. Thanks, thank you. John, anything further on the administrative?
No, sir.
Correspondents?
Just the one annual report from the C Collaborative.
Do I have to sign that?
You need to sign what I have here, please. This is from the C Collaborative.
So, we have the annual report in order to finance the state with the NASHA, our education extortion fiscal year 2014, is that right?
Yes.
Okay. Doesn't require any more than...
It does not.
Okay. Future schedule, January 26th, 7 p.m., the North Running High School Distance Learning Lab. After that, February 9th, 2015, 7 o'clock, will be at the middle school cafeteria, our old, well, not really our old home. And February 23rd, we'll be at the North Running High School Distance Learning Lab.